County Planning Commission, February 28th. We call this Planning Commission meeting to order. As always, we start our meetings with an indication. Will y'all pray with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for many blessings and opportunities you provide us each and every day. Special blessing for this group and other groups as they meet today, the next coming days, to set policy and do what they think is right for the county. Provide and guide us and direct us in doing that. Be with our first responders who put their lives on a daily basis at risk and make sure that we have a response in needed time to get to where we need to be. We I.C. stand in Jesus Christ's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let's see. Planning Commission, consideration approval of January 31st, your 19 minutes.
The move.
Mr. Morris, second by Mr. Cross, all of his favorites say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Old business?
There is no old business.
I think it was Mr. Buster's phone. I know, he told, he's pointing at you. I was just trying to bail him out. Trying to bail him out.
Old business, Renee?
There is no old business.
All right, we'll move on to new considerations. A, please, ma'am.
All right, the first item is a rezoning request by J.M. Saret Properties LLC on Barker Road. Mr. Saret is seeking to rezone 80 acres of a 140-acre parcel from A2 to RE1. This property is located on the south side of Barker Road. This is their survey. That property, the 80 acres, has been divided into four parcels. Two of those parcels have been sold. Zoning doesn't allow for development in the agricultural zone, so they're seeking to change the zoning to RE1. This is a view of the tax map. The remaining portion of that property to the south will remain A2, the 60 acres that remain. This is an aerial view of that property. And these are views of the property on the left. The property owners will be required to sign a set of restrictive covenants stating the lots cannot be further subdivided without board approval. I'm not sure if Mr. Saret is here today, if you have any questions for him or not.
Please, please, Mr. Gaines.
I looked at this, and it's a nice place, and it's gonna, that area needs some, needs cleaning up. It needs some houses and things. What I'm saying is some of the stuff that's out there now needs cleaning up, and I think it'll be a positive thing for this part of the county. And I make motion that we approve it or set it.
Set. Motion, Mr. Gaines, to set the public hearing. Any questions about Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, just, where is this located? Barker? Like way out in the county?
It's about as close to Scott County as you can get. It's...
About three miles north of Pele Hachin.
I just want to point out, man, that looks like an awesome road.
It is.
It is an awesome road.
It was, it was...
Way out in the county, got roads like this, huh? Strife and everything.
It was a bad road. It was a bad road this time last year. I think it had been, Mike, I think it'd been 22 years since it'd been marked.
Thank Scott County, actually, didn't they?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morris, any discussion? All of them say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
The next item is a conditional use permit for Michael and Sarah Skaggs on Barker Road. This is the property that we just reviewed for Justin Saret. Michael and Sarah purchased parcel three. They're seeking a conditional use permit to construct a 3,000-square-foot metal building with living quarters and a shop. And if the zoning is changed to RE1, that's not allowed outright in the RE1 zone, the metal exterior is not. This is the tax map showing their parcel that they've purchased. It's the aerial. This is their site plan. There is an existing road that comes in to the back, that piece in the back, and their driveway will be accessed off of that easement.
They do have county road frontage.
They do have frontage.
They just, there's already a drive that comes to them that they're gonna use, but they understand that they will not be able to sell that front because it wouldn't give them frontage to the county road.
This is a view, a rendering of what their home will look like. And then it's the same pictures of that property.
Is this, are you classifying this as a barn dominium?
Yes, sir.
But we haven't any architectural standards for a barn dominium? I know we've got the building codes, but the exterior as opposed to just an all but a look?
We do not have any standards.
Now, I know we don't do anything for our subdivisions either, but typically they come in with brick, you know, and something, you know, kind of compatible with the neighborhood enough that's not compatible with the country. And just, you know, before, I don't know, maybe we just need to be thinking about some architectural standards, because these things become more and more popular with people doing it. At least something on the front, you know, I'm not saying whole brick it, but something on the front to kind of potentially...
Yep. In fact, the other one I looked at, we just required that he break it up halfway in the front.
Something, I mean, something kind of to satisfy just the amount of building sitting out there.
That actually looks pretty good.
It is.
It does. I'm not saying this specifically, I'm just saying in general as we move forward with that particular building type. But whatever the board wants to do, up to you, Mr. Gaines.
I think a lot of it depends on where it's located, too.
Well, that'd be consistent, though.
Yeah.
I want to go along with this, but also at the same time, we'll ask, I think, because I've gotten this far and they've gotten this far, and it is a good-looking home, I mean, especially for where we're at, I don't think it'd take much encouragement for them to put some brick around the bottom. And let me try to take care of that.
Okay.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, to set the public hearing for March the 4th. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Next is a conditional use permit for Aaron Welburn at 145 Bella Floor Drive. Bella Floor is off the south side of Highway 469. This is a 10-acre parcel. They're seeking the conditional use permit to construct an 1,800-square-foot metal building with living quarters and a shop, another barn dominium. It's a 10-acre parcel that's zoned RE1, so again, metal is not allowed in the RE1 zone. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan. Their home sit, will sit here, and it won't be visible from Bella Floor. They also have gotten signatures from the neighbors stating they're not opposed to the metal structure. This is a rendering of what the front of their home will look like, and that's hardy board. And then these are, the sides and the rear will be metal. They're here today, if y'all have any questions for them. This is a view of that property.
I don't have any questions. I've also done, Aaron and them have done all their legwork, and I've also followed up and where it's located. Actually, you can't even see any of that property from the road, the way it's located, so I don't see a problem with it. There's actually, somebody's already built a, I believe, a barn on some of their properties. Only a couple of lots, I think three lots in there, and somebody's already built a barn in there themselves, not that they're living in it, but I'm just saying, so it is another metal building structure in there. So I just, I make motion to set the public hearing.
Next, Ms. Renee, Morrison will set the public hearing. Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Okay, next is a conditional use permit for M.C. Trailer Sales LLC. They're seeking the conditional use permit to operate a retail utility trailer and parts sales business in an existing building on this property. It's located on the southeast corner of Highway 471 and Highway 43. It's a 4.15-acre parcel, it's zone C2. That's an aerial view, you can see the existing building. And then this is their site plan. It shows the existing buildings on the property. It was last used for track traders, heavy equipment sales. The applicant is proposing hours of operation as Monday through Friday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m., and Saturday, 9:00 to 3:00 p.m. This is a view of that property from the front. And there is a fenced area in the rear of the building, a chain link fence where the trailers will be stored. The maximum number he thinks will be there will be 80. This is from the 471 side. This is views from Highway 43.
What is this zone, again?
C2.
Do we have any requirements, something about the type of fencing with trailers and stuff?
Well, that fence has been there for years, so, you know.
Be great, kind of, you know.
And now, we're gonna have the following application is for this same site. The owner is allowing M.C. Trailer Sales to locate here temporarily, if you will, until he decides to develop the property, but you'll see that on the next application that we review. This is surrounding properties on Highway 43, and this is from 471. We did receive one call, because we posted the property and the sign has been out, one call in opposition.
So what kind of trailers are they going with?
I called them utility trailers. He's here if you have questions for him. He might want to speak to that.
Please state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
James Ginsmore. Address of the property is 4136 Highway 471. It'll be utility trailers, like your little four-wheeler trailers, lawnmower trailers. I'll also have big goose net trailers, enclosed trailers, dump trailers. You know, I'll have an occasional cattle trailer or something there for sale.
So they all go enclosed inside the bench?
Yes, sir.
Probably be better to have them there.
Yeah, yeah.
My house won't be driving off.
Well, I just wanted to know if he was going to expand from what the footprint currently was.
You got them.
Renee, if this is C2, why don't they have trailers there now?
They didn't realize, I guess, that they had to apply for a permit. We found out when they applied for a privileged license.
Okay. So there's basically not going to be a lot of change from what it currently looks like?
No, sir.
Okay. I'll make a motion to set the public hearing.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Morris, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Next, Ms. Renee.
Okay, so the next item is a conditional use permit for Bradley Morris Fleetway at 4136 Highway 471. This is that same property. Again, it's a 4.15-acre parcel, zone C2. That's the existing building. Mr. Morris is seeking a conditional use permit to construct a strip center on this property. He submitted this conceptual drawing showing a convenience store with gas pumps, restaurant, retail space, bait shop, and a car wash. The car wash is on the 471 side, shown there. And again, at the present time, he's going to allow M.C. Trailer Sales to locate in the existing building on the property until he moves forward with developing the property. These are just conceptual. He wants to make sure he can be approved for this use before he moves forward with any kind of detailed drawings. He built a strip center in Gluckstat that it will be similar to, and these are pictures of that. The building is all brick. It has a brick wainscot on the bottom, and then the top is painted brick. Mr. Morris is here today, if y'all have questions for him.
Yeah, Mr. Morris? Hey, how are you?
Good.
Good. Do you mind just kind of describing your plan for me? I know Ms. Renee went through it pretty good, but...
Yes, we want to build a convenience store like the pictures show. That's kind of the look that we've come up with, with our stores, our image. And then with a restaurant, another, you know, to lease out space, and then a car wash, and probably a bait shop, and then, of course, fuels.
Where is exactly this standing?
No, it's up on 43, 471, or 46 up there.
Yes.
It's close to, kind of between me and Gaines. I'm on one side of the road, and he's right there on the other. Okay. Don't imagine all those residential houses are going to be too fired up about this. Have you had any discussion with the residents in that area around it, or...
I have not.
Okay. Has that area just started growing, like, building more houses? Everybody's moved out that direction, yeah. Moved out that direction side of it. Just to be aware of it, I'm gonna get out, I've got to get out to speak to the residents that are out there on the same side and kind of get everybody's viewpoints on that same, and their thoughts of that area. So I'll make the motion to set the public hearing.
For the 15th?
For the 15th, yeah.
Motion, Mr. Cross, second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. All right, Ms. Renee, next.
Next is a conditional use permit for New Singular Wireless Doing Businesses AT&amp;T at 672 Holly Bush Road. They're seeking the conditional use permit to construct a 255-foot wireless telecommunications tower. The property is located on the southeast corner of Holly Bush Road and Highway 25. This is a 17-acre parcel that's zone C3. That little blue area on the east side, that's the approximate location of where the tower will be going. That borders Blackstone subdivision. That's an aerial view. And then this is their site plan. They're showing the 80 by 80 lease area here. That's just a view of the tower, what it'll look like. And then these are the existing site and color rendering of what it would look like with the tower there. They have designed the tower to allow for two additional tenants, and they included a letter of intent stating that they would allow the county to co-locate on the tower for emergency response if needed. This is that property where the tower will be placed. This is just a view along Holly Bush. And these are surrounding properties. This is Blackstone. These are the two houses that the tower will be behind.
Any comments from those folks?
Someone is supposed to be here today, but, okay, so he's here.
But actually, we're just setting the public, hang on a second, just a second. We're just setting the public, do you want to have this discussion now, or you want to wait for the public meeting? I mean, he's gonna have to rehash it anyway at the public meeting when everybody else gets here.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just gonna wait. You're gonna have the opportunity at the next meeting when everybody else has the opportunity to say your piece about the area, but I was just kind of in general, just asking questions. Appreciate you being here, and hate that you have to come back, but we'll set that up for the 15th, if that kind of, do it that way? All right, Mr. Slade, any questions?
What, no, I wanted to mention that Stephen and I had a conversation about, and I had followed up with Josh on behalf of AT&amp;T. The one thing that we really want to include in this is language in some form, doesn't have to be in a lease document or anything like that, but we're gonna need some language. And AT&amp;T has indicated that they're willing to work everything out, but what I want to see is language that says if the tower is no longer in use, typically under the lease, what it says is, hey, we, as the tower owner, we can just walk away, and whatever we leave there becomes the property of the landowner. And we prefer that if AT&amp;T or the owner of the tower, whoever that may be at the time, abandons that tower, the tower gets to leave with them. They take the tower down.
That's right.
And so they've indicated that we're gonna work the language out and get that papered up. We'll probably do it in the form of an additional condition to the approval of the conditional use. That makes the most sense to me. So, but I appreciate the fact that they're willing to, they're willing to accommodate that.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I make a motion, I say it.
Motion, Mr. Gaines, second, Mr. Morris, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign? I guess aye's enough. Go on, Ms. Renee.
Next is a conditional use permit for Daniel Sistrunk on Bibbs Road. Bibbs is off of Henry Cannon, and this property is at the very end of Bibbs Road. He's seeking the conditional use permit to operate a wedding and events venue. This is a 20-acre parcel, it's zoned A1. Bibbs, the public road ends before you get to this property, and Mr. Sistrunk is going to widen the road and put gravel on that private end. That's an aerial view of the property. This is his site plan. These are conceptual as well because he's wanting to make sure he can be approved before he obtains detailed drawings. He does show parking area here, and he's proposing washed gravel or crushed asphalt. He does show a hard surface for handicap to be able to get into the building. This is the building, and then he's going to build a pond on the property as well. This is just a floor plan showing the layout. This is a rendering, and he says that the building will be similar to this. He's gonna construct it out of rough-cut lumber. And then these are views of what the inside might be like. It would be similar to these. He's proposing his hours of operation as Friday to Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. This is a view of that property. The old house will be torn down. And then this is just where you enter the property. And these are views on that private end of Bibbs Road. Daniel is here today, if y'all have any questions for him.
If y'all's memory is good or not, this is where we approved a motocross track last year as a conditional use of this 60 acres or 40 acres, whatever.
Same piece of property?
Huh?
Same piece of property?
Same, part of the same piece of property. The guy never moved on that, that conditional use, which is probably, this is the guy's sin compared to having a motocross out there. So we talked to Mr. Sistrunk, he is aware. I made no guarantees. I told him, you know, if it was really successful, really moved on it, the county might look at improving some of our own road out there to further it along, but pretty much, when he gets out there, it's pretty much the way it is, it's gonna be it for a while, you know, until, you know, some appropriate time, so...
Personally, I'd like to see him put asphalt parking lot rather than gravel.
Well, he's well aware, he has to do this ADA complacency as well to make sure that wherever his ADA parking is, it has to be of some type surface that allows somebody in a wheelchair, whatever the case may be, that'll make it inside the hive.
I was really referencing the whole thing. If he's gonna hold weddings, I don't imagine all them women in heels are gonna walk through gravel.
Well, honestly, I've been to several of those, and not a lot of them are asphalt. I mean, and it's just what you said, Jake, they're like walking on their toes. But I mean, I've been to a really nice one down in Hasburg here fairly recently, and the whole place was that way. But the building was just out of this world, and the whole grounds were, but the parking was that, so I don't know. They spent so much on some of their, the building, I think that's where they shaved it back some on that parking.
I mean, I think Mr. Sistrunk's aware of the ADA compliance. I think that's about as far as I'm willing to push him on the, they, I've seen some of the other ones out there in the counties, in the county, and then, kind of like Jared, you know, it'd be nice to have it, but that's a cost to do. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion, we set the meeting for 15. Second, Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. All right, Ms. Renee, site plan, architectural review.
The first item is for Dollar General Langford. It's out on Highway 471. This property is located on the east side of Highway 471. They're purchasing 1.826 acres of a 20.02-acre parcel that's zone C3. So the Dollar General store would be allowed outright in that zoning district. That's an aerial view of the property. They're proposing a 9,100-square-foot store. This is the location of the store. They show some detention at the rear. Tim has, Mr. Parker, has reviewed the drainage and grading, and he is, he's good with everything that they've submitted. These are their elevations, and they're proposing a brick veneer base with hardy plank above. The rear of the building will be metal. This is a color rendering of what it would look like.
I've been down that road, and...
And then this is a view of the area where the store will be going. It'll be placed next to the convenience store that's there.
Any better pictures of the brick and hardy plank than the...
This is, this is what we have. They're here today also, if y'all have any questions for them. It's Dorsey Development. Dorsey Development.
Y'all please state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Any sentence of my home address?
No, just an address.
Um, I...
We put 3636 North Causeway, Maryland, Louisiana, 7002.
Okay.
This y'all's first time building the area for us at Dollar General?
In this vicinity, it is. I mean, we've built over $100 Generals in a couple of states.
But I mean, in this, in Rankin County?
Yes, sir.
In the Dex, my phone, okay. Have you, I assume you've done this rendering somewhere before, this with the hardy plank and brick?
Actually, this is a new rendering, but we've done some similar in Ridgeland. We have one that's gonna go in in Pearl that's soon to start construction. But this was, this was a new rendering that our architect came up with.
I can make this short. The buildings all around it are all brick, and there's another Dollar General closer into Brandon, it's brick. We'd like to see all brick.
Ms. Renee, is that what the code calls for?
We don't have any architectural standards that specify exactly what it's gonna be that's determined by the planning commission.
Right, right.
We did this with another developer who built a Dollar General in another part of the county, and he wanted to use a different type of material. And in staying constant with our theme throughout our county with all the other Dollar Generals, we required them to put brick up, and so that's why...
Brick or split face block, I think it is, isn't it?
This has to, this needs, like, just, like Steve said, other areas, buildings up there are brick, too, and I would prefer to see bricks.
There's two convenience stores within just a few hundred feet of this, and they're all brick.
And this is a highly traveled area, it's gonna continue to grow.
And it is the very next place that flow would probably take, and, I mean, it is the popping place in Rankin County.
Ms. Renee, could you go back, once, to where our render is? So if we had the split face blocks already on the building, so you're saying just put brick on top of that?
I'd like, I'd like big brick.
Well, I think, aren't you talking about where the hardy board?
Yes, sir, so that's a combination of ethos and hardy board, but the bottom is split face block, so if we just replace, go in vertical above that three foot and just make it brick, and just take the hardy and the ethos off.
Take the hardy board off?
Yes, sir, and then brick. So you'd have block on the bottom on a little run, and then you'd brick it up to the top.
I think that'd probably be fine.
And you, well, you wanted to show us something better at another time? You knew what it looks like?
No, I don't, I, I mean, I can see where he's talking about the block is where we can get right there, and then come up from the block to the roof with a brick. I really think it would probably be more economical and maybe better I appeal to start at the bottom with the brick and go up, but I, if you can show me something that satisfies on that...
Yes, sir.
You worry about the cost.
Yeah, yes, sir. So could you go to the convenience store, Ms. Renee? It looks like that's how they have it, and that's why I propose that. It looks like they, yes, it looks like they have a run of block, and then they go up with brick, and then they do a crown that matches the color on the block. So if we, if we take that as a model, maybe just a little different color on it.
Yes, sir.
But, yeah, yes, sir, that's certainly possible, yeah.
All right. You want to set the public hearing, Mr. Gaines?
This is a site plan, architectural review, so it can be approved contingent upon that if you, you know, that's what you want to do.
Yes, sir, Mr. Gaines, so what I can do is we can have our architect reproduce that rendering pretty, pretty quickly, and then provide it to Ms. Renee for dissemination and you guys.
Perfect.
And then you take quick look.
Contingent, yeah. All right, I'll make a motion.
Let's prove it, contingent on getting...
Yeah, brick.
First, Mr. Gaines, on the contingency he forementioned, second by Mr. Bishop, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank y'all, we appreciate it. Next, Ms. Renee, American Supply Company, East Business Park Drive.
All right. American Supply Company is proposing construction of a 59,000-square-foot warehouse and office building. This property, East Business Park, is off Highway 80 on the north side. The site is 8.62 acres. It's zoned I2 industrial. That's an aerial view of the property. This is their site plan. You see the building here. That's a view of the building. And then these are the color renderings. They're a supplier of industrial pipe and pipe fittings. They're proposing brick on that front or kind of, front kind of offset area where the office will be. They're proposing brick on that front or kinda, front kind of offset area where the office will be. And then the sides and rear would be metal. They've added some landscaping, as you can see, along the building, just to kinda break up that metal exterior. Now, these are views of that property. We have a couple of remaining outstanding issues. The first one being water. They're trying to see if Brandon will allow them to tie on to a line that they have on Grant's Ferry Parkway. And if so, that would be the best option because of the fire protection. They could get a fire sprinkler system. Evergreen can service the water, provide the water, but they couldn't support the fire sprinkler system. So we, if you want to approve it today, we'd like to do it contingent upon, you know, them verifying with Brandon if they can service it. If not, they would have to dig some, a pond or have a holding tank. The other item is the grading and drainage plan. Tim has not finished reviewing that and so we would need to make it contingent upon those two things.
I I've had discussions on both sides, I mean, of both things that she's brought up. And I'm good with the contingency on the water. I feel like they'll, I mean, I know that they'll get it done or we'll go. Can't, you gotta do it. And Tim is doing the drainage and it's continued, of course. But I know where this property is. I looked at it last week and I just make it contingent to those two things and I make the motion that we go with it.
Second.
First, Mr. Gaines, those two contingencies, second by Mr. Bishop. Any discussion?
I'll be secure. How big is this building compared to your other one?
Uh, about three times size. We're probably thirteen thousand square foot ware, warehouse space right now. And we're gonna go to about fifty. Would love to put a hundred thousand out there, but we can't, you know. Pocketbook says let's do half of it first.
Currently, currently you're in the building Pearl?
Uh, we've been in Pearl since nineteen eighty-nine.
I buy supplies from you.
I was gonna say, you look familiar. What's the, what business?
Yeah. I own Morse Welding.
Okay. Um, we've been there since nineteen eighty-nine.
Yeah.
Sure they hate losing you.
We have a first.
Congratulations on the new building.
Hey, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye. I'll propose like sign, Mr. Kears. Thank you, sir, we appreciate it. Nuisance properties, Ms. Renee, let's get moving. Come on, Mr. Lee, join the party.
Hey, I do have one question though. Well, right there, Renee, the Dollar General down, have they resubmitted something?
On four sixty-nine south? Yes, sir, they have. I think Tim's still waiting on some information on the drainage.
Okay. I got a call about it this morning, just wondered where it was, so I just asked, okay? All right, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Mr. President, the first item under our nuisance considerations, continuation of the Lisa Gibson nuisance property at fifty-nine twelve, Grant's Ferry Road, District Two. We will reopen that public hearing. I believe I saw Ms. Gibson. Yes. Let's, let's get Renee to demonstrate and then Ms. Gibson, you know, here's your question.
All right, so this was tabled from one three nineteen. These are pictures of that property that were taken. These are December thirty-first. There was a question as to the legal ownership of that property and whether she has obtained what she needed. The only one who knows that question.
Run it out.
Is this you?
That's me, yes.
Okay.
Let's see.
I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, that's me from a long time ago.
Yeah, that's you. Yeah, and so I've been calling you. So what I need from you.
This is a development.
I mean, what I need, I've been calling you and they said, well, he's the man that's been talking to you. And I said, well, what I need from you is the foreclosure, 'cause you got all that. I brought it to you that, that year. So you got all the information. But I can't get it because you have. So I just thought you was representing them.
Yeah, I actually am just representing them.
You represent them?
Yes, ma'am, I'm the attorney.
No, 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 no. For my.
Oh, the other side.
The other side. So I was just confused. And so. I'm like, he is giving me heat on top of heat. I don't understand, he gave this to me.
Yeah, can we get a continuance of this?
Yes, can we, please? 'Cause I just need to come to your office, I really do.
It looks like I'm gonna need to sit down.
Aren't you glad you're still here?
Yes.
Miss Little, do you?
Yeah, this is what happens sometimes when you practice law in a small town. Yeah, so it looks like that I prepared a warranty deed for Ms. Gibson that came from Roosevelt Gibson. Is that your dad?
It came from Adams and Eaton. I went to the foreclosure and I, so, yeah, but.
The property was coming from your dad.
Right.
Is that correct?
And it was in foreclosure.
Yeah.
So you got all the information.
You wanna say that one more time?
Yeah, just for recording.
He is confusing me. Then when I looked at him, I said, oh, that is just a sleigh.
Obviously, Ms. Gibson and I need to have it, we need to meet together and try to re, to assess what may have happened around this timeframe. It's ten years ago.
All right, so I'll make a motion. We table it.
Hang on now, I don't know if I really would give it to attorney.
I'm trying to shut him down. I'm trying to shut him down right now. I'll make that motion.
We must cross to table this to the.
We get it figured out.
Second, Mr. Gaines, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. I'll propose like sign, Mr. Kears. Next, Ms. Renee. Go ahead.
Okay, so the next nuisance property is for Valerie Johnson at one ninety-two Floyd Street. These picture, she was continued also. And these pictures were taken.
A little better life.
Twelve thirty-one. I will tell the picture taker. Twelve thirty-one eighteen. The condition of the property has not changed.
In fact, I think it's some of the worst.
So I don't believe Ms. Johnson is here today.
What's your pleasure, Mr. Gaines?
This is the one that has the ditch or creek that runs through.
This is a situation that I do not really know how to handle. Because I'm, if you knew, I don't know if I wanna go into all the details because of the Privacy Act. But I really don't.
Is this the one that has the big ditch in front of her?
Got the ditch, got the ditch, but it's, it's got a whole lot more to it. What I'm getting at is if, I don't know where you're going, where she's gonna go. I mean, she's basically, she's not living in the trailer, I'll put it that way. And so I don't know where, she basically doesn't have any. I don't know where, where, where she's gonna go. I've had long conversations with the neighbors that have tried to help, but you know, you can only do so much financially. And I, I mean, we can, we can send it up there, they can tell her to do this, she can't do anything. I mean, I don't know where you're gonna, where she's gonna be. She's exhausted every, as far as I can tell, every means of, of help. But then sometimes then she gets upset when they can't continue to help.
Jared, how did it get in this condition anyway?
Just the way it is, basically, just she can't afford to do anything.
I mean, somebody made it like this, though.
Well, she, she did. I guess she did, I don't know.
Well, she was explaining that that culvert, I mean, that's like a six foot drop off or five.
You can't even drive to.
Had a culvert, but it, as water has been worse the last couple of years, it keeps washing that culvert out and downstream. And they can't get to it, they have to wait across the creek and.
See, it's not a, it's not a.
Complicated itself, but I mean, it's just a moving target.
It's, it's not a, it's a common ditch. It's not the county's ditch.
Well, I mean, I just don't want us to be in a position to have to go spend our money to fix it, to clean it up.
No, I know, I know that.
I think we're gonna be able to clean it up, we can't get there.
Well, I'm sure we could.
Yeah, we, we, we could, we could if it's declared a nuisance and the board, majority of the board makes a finding on the record that it has to be cleaned up at county expense. That's, y'all would have to do that. Have to actually take that step.
She's actually, she's not, she's living in the backyard. The house, the trailer's not even livable.
There's probably more of a, you know, this, this may be a dilapidated structure condition. That may need to trigger, we may need to trigger under our property condition section. And that, that might free us up to actually get on premises to, to do an inspection, a code based inspection for the purposes of having it declared uninhabitable.
Well, I mean, what, what is that gonna do?
Well, it's, it's gonna give us a, a further basis if that, Jay, to take matters into our own hands.
I wish you could get on there and look, because what I'm going by is, is people that know her or know the situation. And I mean, if you clean it up, move it, basically, she's just gonna be living in a, living a tent there. She's basically what she's living in now.
Well, I mean, I just want to get that. What good would it do for us to condemn the, the trailer, you know, if she's still gonna be on the premises?
Correct. Eventually, I mean, I'm just telling you what the steps would be in the process. There would be, essentially, there would be a complete cleanup of the property, the impression of a lien and eventually a sale of that property through the tax sale process, Jay? That would change ownership and then preclude her from having permission to be on the property.
Shouldn't that already be taking place anyway if she's not paying taxes?
I don't know.
She's exempt.
Presuntively, that could happen.
Is something she paying?
Says she's exempt.
Huh?
Says she's exempt.
Is she over sixty-five? Disabled?
I think she was disabled. I think she's disabled.
And how many acres is it?
I mean, how long, can you see this from?
It did, yeah, the road did end right to it.
If it got cleaned up, it counted. Someone would buy it at the tax level.
Is one way of getting saved, if she's exempt.
No, 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 no. Our, our lien would become a basis for a tax charge.
I got you.
That caused a cleanup.
But no, it's a cul-de-sac mailbox right there. They turn the cul-de-sac and put the mail in right there and that's, I mean, that's it. It's at the very end, outside of Triangle Acres.
Slightly more than two acres.
Oh, it is?
Yes, sir.
And what's the maximum we could spend in a given tax year?
Twenty thousand.
The Triangle Acres, is that area right outside of Ridgeland?
Yes, it's still county.
Like when they went out and they took in everything but Triangle Acres?
It's in that other private neighborhood.
Yeah.
It goes, we turn on Cleary Road, right there on the right. It's a real mixed neighborhood as far as it's got some really nice, it's got some nice houses, then it's got, it's built back in the day when nobody held them to, just like Robin Hood. To zoning, it's nothing they.
So stress what's pretty obvious, but it needs to be on the record, this, there, there is no good solution. There's nothing palatable at all about any of the steps that we could take at county level to deal with this. Statues simply don't provide for an easy solution to this kind of situation. We're relying on, quite honestly, the court system to incentivize people to do what they won't do voluntarily. And this person appears to be beyond the reach of even a court order or a threat to be incarcerated. That there's not another op, well, what do you do then?
Yeah.
I, I think aside from taking matters into your own hands, there is nothing, except to do nothing.
No, that's, that's what I really don't explain to you. I mean, you do what you do, you, I don't know what you're gonna do with it. Where's she gonna be? And this has been going on, I mean, it's gotten worse, obviously, but it's been going on for, ever since I've been elected. Only, only its magnitude, I mean.
She needs to be in her, her home for habitat right there, you know?
This, this, this culvert deal has been going on and on and, and they'd get some dirt put in it and, and she'd get across and this just went on and on. You've heard the story, but it's gotten worse and worse and I'd like, I've talked to some of the, I mean, she's family doesn't know what to do anymore. They can't afford to keep, and it's a very limited family now. Neighbors, same thing. Everybody's reached out, tried. The problem is, once you try, she becomes dependent and they just can't keep it up, you know?
Yeah.
What would it cost, Mr. Harrison, to put, Mr. Harrison, really? What would it cost to put a culvert in that ditch, make it dry? We'd have to do that, right? My, my, my business.
To get the trailer out. Or you dismount the trailer in there and walk it across the creek or you'd have to put.
Put it in and drag it out, I guess.
Well, you had to crush it and you could, you could put a connect, I mean, dumpster across it, drag it across, I don't know. We could get across it, we could cut it, we could cut it down and get across. I don't know. It's a no, it's a lose, lose and a thing.
I don't have the files or something.
Oh, that's good stuff.
What I, what I was getting at is it's a lose situation. It's bad for us to look like we have.
He said, he said it's about six to put a culvert in.
I'm, I'm gonna step out of the way, I'm here.
Six hundred dollars.
We get approved, I said, sir, about twenty-three, twenty-five, out of break. At the end of the day, somebody would be willing to pay that on a market basis.
I don't know, Bob, I don't know where it is, you know where it is.
I don't know. I don't think that you could clean that up and ever sell it for what it would cost to go in there. I mean, I think it'd be a lose and probably, if you think we're gonna, we're gonna break even on tax, I don't think so. But what we should do.
Sounds to me like she needs to go find her HUD facility to live in. If she gets disability, she should qualify for low income housing. She needs to get off of this property anyway.
So my biggest concern would be that we take some sort of action to clean it up, but we don't solve the underlying issue, which is that she still is going to want to live there. And I, I think that would just lead us to a repetitious cycle that we don't want. And there's always the possibility that if we take action to clean it up and we impress the lien and it moves to the tax level, there's always the possibility it doesn't sell.
Yeah.
Then it eschets to the state eventually.
Yeah.
And they won't take any responsibility once it eschets to the state.
Can we get human resources to go visit her and see if they can help her?
Find a place to live.
Find a place to live and then maybe we can get that done? 'Cause this, we're not gonna do anything for another month, two months, as wet as it is anyhow. But if we could get her in some kind of ha, a housing for low income or disabled, that may help her decide that I'll just set up whatever I can get for it and whoever, clean it up or whatever she.
Jared, is there, is there?
I just don't wanna move her out of that tent and she move out in the woods somewhere else and.
That's what's gonna happen.
Yeah, is there, is there a mental issue here? You know, we're not a medical provider, so we're not burdened by HIPAA. Is there a mental issue?
Not that I know of. I know according to the people, I've spoke to several in the last couple of weeks.
There could be a tight patrol state over where she is going.
Yeah.
The minute we try to get her help and she voluntarily walks off, I don't believe there's gonna be a basis for them to try to keep her.
It's not.
Well, I would just like to try and offer our people out and just, if she turns us down, she turns down, we do what we gotta do. But at least if we can offer her a good clean place to go and live. Uh, we've done all we can do and then if we have to.
They have a list of places that they have where, where people with HUD.
Human Resources does that.
I don't know.
Who, who should take the responsibility to make those contacts?
That's saying they don't think they'd do that.
Human Resource, Maine County Human Resources does not provide for assisted living or.
No, 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 but it just can give them, if they can tell them about places to go and how to apply for whether.
I know he can't go.
Yeah, I have too.
Yeah.
They have, and, and, I mean, they have, they have other resources that they offer.
Mark Dearman's the only one I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, who, who do y'all propose that we task with making the contact?
Contact with her?
With, uh, human resources. Out of the options.
She have a cell phone?
I don't know. Well, she's got a phone or has had one, 'cause she's called me numerous times.
So she's got some type of income then.
Well. I'd say if we don't have a volunteer, then it's Janice.
Renee's gonna volunteer.
Well, Janice, I won't fight you over it.
Well, y'all flip.
But I don't mind calling.
Flip a coin.
I've had two different numbers on them, so I don't know which phone's good.
We have a phone number.
You do?
That she gave us the last time she was here.
Can we?
Okay.
I think we can get more.
Pay her for thirty days and give them a chance and let them tell us.
This is not gonna get any, you're not gaining anything, that's gonna look bad on us just booting her out.
Let's do it for sixty, how about that?
Well, then the weather might get decent, you're right, yeah.
There's a motion to make by Mr. Morrison to continue this on for another sixty days. Uh, second by Mr. Gaines.
What do you think? What are we gonna accomplish on sixty?
I would like for Dearman just to give us something that he comes back and says she told me to take a hike? Or she really wants to move out here?
What I'm saying, do you think we need sixty to get that word?
Maybe. I don't know. I don't.
If you want, I don't care.
No, I'm saying thirty or, because everybody.
Pick the, pick the topic.
Well, Jerry, if we do thirty, no matter what, I mean, we want to declare it a nuisance and send it up to the court to go through the process.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, you wanna leave it, you wanna leave it, I mean, I don't, I don't know what sixty, I don't know what we're gonna gain by sixty if we're getting that. I think you're gonna find out yes or no in thirty.
What we talk about is the thirty days.
All right. Motion by that is about to continue this for thirty days for Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion to adjourn, next, Mr. Renee.
This, uh, continuation of Jerry McCoy nuisance property at two oh one Robin Hood Trail. This is District Three property. We will reopen that public hearing. Um, I'll ask Renee to demonstrate if there's anyone here on behalf of the Jerry McCoy property that can step forward.
Okay, so it was tabled from eleven twenty-nine eighteen. Um, these pictures were taken in November. There hasn't been any change. Mr. McCoy said that he was trying to sell the property. Um.
So you have, you have, Mr. McCoy, you have boarded up the holes?
Yes. And I'm keeping the grass cut, and the man that was going by it for some reason failed through. But it is still, you know, I'm keeping the grass cut, I'm keeping it boarded up. And I'm just in the process of trying to sell it. That's all I know to do.
If you could just, if you could just keep the maintenance up to all means, and I appreciate what you've done so far with, you just maintain it like that.
I will keep the maintenance. It will, you know, it'll be, yes.
Well, just, uh, Mr. Slade, he's, he's agreed to main, to keep maintaining it, keep the grass cut, got the windows boarded. Is there any reason to continue, or should we just let it go? Or what do you wanna do, Renee?
We can just continue to monitor it if you'd like, um, you know.
All right, let's give it ninety days, and we'll be able to back the grass.
We don't have to do that.
You could declare it a nuisance and just let us monitor it, if everything is good.
We've already declared it a nuisance.
Okay. So if it remains good, we won't take any action, but if, like this summer.
He was in here, and he was gonna get it, we thought he was gonna sell it.
It's gonna be maintained. I promise you that.
Well, just to make sure on the safe side, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to declare it a nuisance, and we'll let, uh, Renee's office maintain it, not maintain it, but monitor it as we go forward. Second by Mr. Cross. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
Thank y'all. Thank y'all. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
All right, Ms. Renee, next.
Okay.
Next item is the Eric and Mary Baggett nuisance property at one twenty-one Stapleton Road. It's a District Three property. We'll open that public hearing, and I'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate with the photos. If there's anyone here on behalf of Eric and Mary Baggett nuisance property that can come forward.
All right, so we received a complaint here about a business being operated, um, that a shop was built without a permit. We sent the letters and they were received, and we did receive a call from the owner. These are views of that property. Uh, the owner stated that he, um, hauls the vehicles in and dismantles them and takes them to the junkyard to be crushed. So these are the new pictures. A lot of the vehicles have been removed.
State your name and address for the record.
I'm Eric Baggett, one twenty-one Stapleton Road, Randy, Mississippi.
So it's zoned A, agricultural. You can't operate a business in the agricultural zone. Uh, like I said, there was no permit for the shop. It was built without, um, I think they got a permit for electrical to an existing shop. So. We just need to know what his plans are about.
Uh, my plans, uh, Reed's, I had Reed's Metal build the building. I thought they had all that. When they left, only thing left was electrical. I had the electrical. The cars, I just, I don't like those either. The property next door, I purchased it in two thousand twelve, the trailer. Uh, the lady that lives in front of me, her son, I tried to buy it years ago. She said he, when my son gets out of prison, I'm gonna let him have the house. I mean, the land put a trailer there. She did. He got out, was doing the same thing he went to jail for. So I bought it, and it was destroyed. I spent about ten thousand dollars inside of a brand-new trailer, wasn't a year old, to fix it back right. Yes, I hate the stuff was there too. One of my drivers works there. I'm not per se operating a business there. I buy junk cars for a living. I tow for auctions. Over a period of time, a lot of cars did pile up there to, um, get the way it was. I hate that. I didn't like that to start with. All the equipment you see there was rented equipment for me to crush all those cars to get them out of there to clean it up. It's not, that's not what's happening at my house. That was equipment to get them out of the yard, because it was wet and cut up, and all the parts you see there was just to be recycled.
So Renee, we've got a couple of issues. It sounds like we've got a potential zoning issue, uh, that we may need to address. And then we, we've got to figure out some way to wind the clock back, uh, and, and figure out code compliance with respect to the metal structure. Is that right? Assuming we get the, the zoning straight, then we need to rewind the clock and figure out the, the inspection protocol in the building.
Right.
Right?
That tree, none of that's there anymore. I've spent, I spent like five thousand, I can show you, received forty-nine seventy-five to re-grade all that, put gravel there and get all that up. Right now, there's still ruts out there, because it's wet where I had to go out there with a fort lift to pull all that out.
Yeah, I think that the property, uh, from a sightliness standpoint, looks a whole lot better than it did with all the vehicles that were out.
Well, the vehicles there, they was backed straight in. My driver backed them and left them. When it got wet, I had to pull them out. That's what made the mess. I didn't want that there to start with, but, I mean, I, I do understand your standpoint.
Yeah, so what, what we got is a, we got a zoning issue. Let me walk you through that right quick. It's, it's ag zone, okay?
Yes.
That doesn't allow a, a business, okay? And saying that I'm not running a business, I'm just towing cars, and I'm unloading the cars that I tow here, and they're staying here for a while.
I'm not, I'm not unloading anymore there. Then my driver was doing that.
Yeah.
You know, because we was busy, and I'm, I told, you know, I didn't like that to start with, when he backed them there, and, and I'm running, you know, I'm out of state every day, and they did pile up, they're gone. There's, there is a few. I won't say they're all gone, because to the back corner, there's like four or five left back there that we was getting stuck and making it to that point. So it will have to dry up to get to those. And then I still have to, uh, once it dries up, grade the ruts up that was made, getting them out of there.
We might be able to solve the riddle of the zoning issue by simply an understanding that the board intends to enforce the ag zone requirements, which means no business, no commercial operation. So no more storing of cars, no more dragging them in there, all that kind of stuff. That, that just doesn't need to happen here.
Yes, sir.
Okay? That, so that'd be one issue. And then the secondary issue that we need to address is the actual structure that was not permitted. We need to rewind the clock and go back through that process as best we can.
I thought we did, eh, well, let me back up. When I had the building, I had Reed Metal, I thought they took care of all that.
Right.
Once I got the building, and they said, well, you need a permit, I come to get permits. They said, you know, what stage are you in? This is what's here. Um, what's left of the building, electrical? I got that, and I spoke to them about that, and they were supposed to, I don't know what all permits was needed, it's supposed to, had been sent up.
Well, it sounds like that maybe Reed's messed you up, because they didn't acquire the permit on the front end that they need to get.
Yes.
So it's, generally, we get permits before we start any construction, so I think they may have messed you up.
Well, I have never built any building or anything. I know, all I know is I paid Reed, you know, and.
Well, the good thing is ain't nothing money can't fix.
Yes. Well, whatever we gotta do to fix it.
Right. So what, where do you say you go? Again, it's, it's kinda rewinding the clock.
Yes.
They'll buy the ground, so we gotta figure out a way to work around that.
Yes.
These folks are over here, know how to do that. Um, guys, I, I don't know where we stand, Bob. If you've got any questions about.
So the car, all the cars are gone? The junk car stuff are gone? Or the working are gone?
They're, the majority's gone. Like I said, it, he backed them up where you see right there. That's there. See that white truck right there?
Yeah.
That's what's, that portion, that, uh, black car, that's my, one of my drivers, that's his vehicles. The truck behind it is a parts vehicle for one of my tow trucks. I hadn't moved it, and there's a trailer behind it. That, right there, everything else is gone. Um, like I said, but like five behind the trailer that's, it's too wet to get back there and get them. As soon as it dries up.
We're not talking about your own vehicles, vehicles that you own? We're not talking about those, okay? We're talking about vehicles that are towed, brought onto this place.
And that's exactly what I said. There are five behind there that I cannot get to, because it's still wet.
So my question is, is, is there any kind of interim period of time that you end up with a couple of cars there for, say, a week or two, and your normal course of coming and going to do your business?
No, it has. It did to do that. It will not happen again. I didn't like it to start with. Like I said, he'd come in late, drop two, because he was, had to leave early the next morning.
Right.
And it made it to that point. And the, the reason the equipment was there, I brought it in myself. And actually, if you see the date it was sent and the date the pictures were taken, I started moving them before I was notified. And I, I got in the mail, I'm, I did that in perfect timing, because it was already done by the time I got a letter saying it needed to be done. I didn't, I didn't move this because of the letter. I, myself was sick of seeing it.
All right. So, Mr. Slade, we have solved the nuisance problem, other than the fact we're still trying to now solve the permitting problem of the building and the zoning issue to ensure that he's not, either he is and needs to get condition or use for work, if that's what he chooses to do, or he need, and we need to solve those other two things, right?
It sounds like your intention is to not let, not let any of those.
I, my intention was never to have them there to start with. It did happen, yes, sir.
I don't see a zoning issue anymore.
Okay.
But I do, I, obviously, we do need to solve the permit riddle. And I, I would propose that we have, uh, these folks get with Renee's office, with Brian.
But that really has nothing to do with the nuisance issue any longer.
I promise you, it bothered me more than it bothered y'all, because I mean, I can show you, from my house to the end of the road, I probably spent three hundred thousand dollars since I've been there, you know, on the house and the shop, and buying the property next door and re, you know, remodeling it, so.
Ms. Renee, what is your pleasure here?
I mean, as you can see, my yard right there, that's, that's my truck. My, that red and white truck, that, my baby says that's his truck, won't let me sell this. Perfect truck. My daughter's Mercedes. Uh, my son's truck, another one of my trucks. It's, it's personal vehicles, every vehicle. I'm lying. My, uh, silver ride is not tagged. I bought it to restore. If I gotta buy a tag before I leave, I buy it. It is not tagged at this moment, but it's mine.
So, I think the best solution.
Huh?
Probably the best solution would just be to declare it a nuisance in case he doesn't get rid of the other vehicles and things. We can monitor it. If he takes care of everything, we won't do anything. But that way, we don't have to come back every time, uh, to y'all. But we will monitor. We'll give them time to take care of the rest of the issues.
If I understand correctly, before Mr. Slade jumps back in, is it, if he, y'all go back out there in two weeks, and he's gotten the rest of the vehicles out, dried up enough, and he's got rid of everything, then you're gonna drop the nuisance out of the, the complaint?
Right.
And then we'll let, we'll put that to bed, you know? Uh, and then we'll still continue to, you need to continue to work with her regarding the permitting of that building and come to some solution there.
In two weeks.
Pretty much, that, that makes sense?
Yeah, but the permit issue, you just.
No, I'm saying, no, what I'm saying, that in two weeks, the five will not be gone. I spent fifteen hundred dollars redoing the set that they got run over trying to get to the spot.
It may take longer, two weeks, the weather. He just used that as a.
And I mean, you can look at my house, my shop and everything. I did, I didn't want it to look like that to start with. They back, they was all back in a line on the road. How it got messed up and looked like that at the front was them being drug out and being, you know, processed to go straight to the crusher is why it looked bad up front. They was not bad like that until somebody happened to come on the, at the prime moment to say, hey, this looks like trash. Because they was all back straight in a line, just as nice they are in my driveway.
All right, this is what we're gonna do, Ms. Baggett.
And the yard got.
I'm gonna go ahead and declare it a public nuisance, just for the sake of, so you don't have to come back up here before us again. Let Ms. Renee continue to monitor the situation. Soon as the property gets good and dried, you can get rid of those things. You get back, and you let Ms. Renee know that the, the vehicles are gone, and you've gotten up everything else, whatever other maybe issues there that, that solved, that, that created the public nuisance complaint, and we'll close that file. And I'll leave it to y'all to figure out the building permits. That make sense? That all work, everybody?
Yeah.
All right, I make that motion.
Second.
Second, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Baggett. We appreciate you coming up.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Slade.
The next item, item E, is the Kathy and Joseph Bigby nuisance property. This is, uh, one twenty-nine Russell Street. It's a District One parcel. Uh, we'll open that public hearing.
Somebody's behind you.
Okay. Are you Ms. Bigby? Ms. Bigby? Okay. Hold on just a second. I'll let Ms. Renee demonstrate with the photos.
All right, so, um, we received a complaint, uh, January tenth of this year about the condition of the property. Uh, inoperable vehicles, rubbish and debris. We sent the mail and the letters where we saved, and this is a view of the property, um, on the twenty-sixth. I have done some work. There's still some inoperable vehicles there.
Who owns the vehicles? Are they yours?
Yeah.
State your name, please.
Mine and my grandchildren's. But, uh, all of them run, all of them wanted one running. We called them all. The one out by the road on the tree, the blue one runs, and the brown one runs. He drives one that's there. But, uh, they do need to be cleaned up, and I am working on that. Kathy Bigby, one nine one Russell Street, uh, one twenty-nine.
This, this one right here runs?
Yeah, it runs.
Does it have tires on it?
I got a screenshot that's there. He never sent anything to the garbage truck. On the truck, around the house and everything is, I'm working on that, and I can get all that taken away from there. Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to tell, this one doesn't have tires on it, does it?
Uh, well, it does now. It didn't have.
Okay. Well, it definitely is gonna have to be cleaned up, and that one, whichever that other one was.
Yeah. Uh, the, the one with the tires on it belonged to my son, and he died in January of last year. And I put it down there and I used it for the garbage truck, I guess. That's what it looks like. But anyways, it's getting cleaned up. I worked on the other place.
Flip back, Renee. What's that, that one is out by the road, been up that?
Oh, that's already gone to the.
That was gone?
Yeah. All of that's gone.
Okay.
These are the new pictures. That was the old picture. These are the new pictures.
Those are new pictures, okay. So all we got is the one up front, full of trash.
And it will be gone this week. Well, I, I tell you, one of the reasons it's not been got, um, down is the road going into the house after all this rain we had. You can't hardly get in and out of that driveway after, on the kind of that. It, the, the water washes the dirt.
Right.
All out from around this driveway.
All right, so all we really lack, Renee, then, is the one full of trash.
Looks like it, yes, sir.
All right. Well, I'm gonna do the same thing we just did. I'm gonna go and declare it a nuisance, and then they'll, let them monitor it. And you said you're gonna get it on out of there, and it's gonna have to be gotten out of there, cleaned up, and it, it's where your problem is right now. All right, so I, I make the motion to declare it a nuisance.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Select it by myself. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion to adjourn is next, Mr. Slade.
Item F is the Barbara Sutton.
Public hearing closed?
We'll, we'll close it. We're gonna close all the public hearings that have been open so far today.
Spent some good ones.
Yes, sir. Yeah, that first one really got me stirred up, I wanna tell you about that.
Yeah, that was the best one.
Yeah.
I'm glad we got hit down. That was funny. Called you out.
I was not prepared for that. Uh, item F is the Barbara Sutton nuisance property, one thirty Russell Street. This is District One. We'll ask Ms. Renee to demonstrate.
All right. We've received complaints on this property through the years. Um, we received a new complaint, uh, January tenth of twenty nineteen about rubbish and debris. Um. We did receive a call, and, uh, he has started working on it. These are the new pictures. There's still work to be done, but it, it has improved.
Okay. Uh, I think, I think the, again, the way to handle this one is just like we did the other one, and declare it. And I, I hope you understand why we do that, that we don't have to start all over again, and that they'll monitor it. And you're, you've made a lot of progress, and, uh, just continue doing that, and they'll monitor the progress, and I think everything will be fine.
State your name and name and address for the record, please, ma'am. I'm sorry, I kinda got ahead of ourselves. State your name and address.
Barbara Sutton, one thirty Russell Street, Lawrence, Mississippi.
You, sir?
I need Barbara Sutton.
Thank y'all.
All right.
All right, there's a motion by Mr. Morrison to declare it a nuisance. Second by Mr. Morrison, I mean, Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion to adjourn. Thank y'all. We appreciate you coming today.
We need to phone them.
Anything else for planning commission, Ms. Renee?
That's it.
We're going to hear a motion to adjourn this to the March twenty-eighth at nine AM. The motion to adjourn by Mr. Morrison. Second by Mr. Cross. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, like sign. Motion to adjourn. We're gonna wait a minute while Ms.